Let's make the order please, for everyone joining us, please.
But they're legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Before we go any further, this is a first minute of the October the fifteenth, two thousand nineteen meeting, please.
Time, please.
This is Smith.
Smith.
Mr. Welk, is that them all yesterday?
Yes.
All yesterday, I'm doing it because I've been known to get to do it and they'll say, "You just got three minutes." Welcome everybody this afternoon, we've got several items on our agenda, which is good. This is a lot of things to work, to cover and answer some questions as need be. But before we do that, Mr. O'Donoghue knows, first thing we do, we ask if anybody's signed in to speak. We have, Bill Carpenter signed in to speak. So, Bill, as I mentioned to you before we started, this is the first thing on our agenda. So, whatever you'd like to say, feel free to say it.
Okay. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I'm Bill Carpenter, I'm the head soccer coach for the high school boys. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to coach the boys, I really enjoy that. And the reason I'm here today is, one of your items is the football field by the school. Unlike most of the teams, we practice at the Lions Club. Our practice field is about sixty percent of what a normal-sized field is. We're lucky to have it and I appreciate having it. And I just wanted to lend my support to whatever you guys would like to do over there, plus other facilities within the county. I operate along with Carol's daughter, a buddy league, we have one gym for twenty teams, plus the middle school. I understand what you guys are going through, I didn't want to come here and beat up one of you guys, like I figured some people would. But, like I said, anything I can do to help improve my team and the other teams, I'm off on that.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I neglected to say there, this for informational purposes, when people sign in, we aren't really able to have a discussion. This is a topic, we'll be talking about later, it's on our agenda, so you feel free to comment, take part in. Okay, let's go into the presentations. The first person we have on our agenda is Dennis Webb, who wants to talk about school safety. Mr. Webb.
Dennis, can you get up close enough so Rowley can hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, he's good.
I'll try not to walk back to the board. I really, I've been trying to figure out how to start this ever since I knew I was coming here. You guys may remember last year, I was here to talk to you guys about school safety. If you don't remember-
Yes, we remember.
Okay. It has come to my attention that certain events have taken place at the high school that have wanted me to come back here. I know you guys probably, okay, do you know what happened a couple of weeks ago at the high school?
Well, without you being more specific, I think we probably know, I think, we probably know things that happened at the high school, some that you probably don't know. But I would say generally, when those things occur, Mr. Mathis notified Mr. King and Mr. Minkiff, who've been in turn to speak to us, so off the cuff, I would say, yes, we're aware of that.
Okay, I just want, because I didn't want to have to bring it up and talk about it. Did you also know that the matter in question was also a, there was actually an issue with the same thing where the person in sixth or seventh grade actually had brought a weapon to school? Twenty-two pistol with rounds in it? And that he had had these, you know, same issues come up before in his past? Now, the only reason I'm saying this is because if we look at history, and we look at history, we think about the fact that, you know, since Columbine, everybody, I don't care where you're at, everybody's had something to do, there's some kind of school shooting, there's some kind of mass shooting, they have become so prevalent now that people don't care. And it upsets me to know that as soon as that happened, and I found out what the past was, I started thinking about, well, how is that relevant to today? Well, if you think about it, a few of the people that have done mass shootings, or even a school shooting, had had prior incidences in their record where they had gotten in trouble. But nobody did anything. They let it slide, and they let it slide, I was just kids. Well, I'm sorry, how many of us, if we had brought that kind of weapon to school, would have been just sent home?
Okay, let me just respond at this point. Now, you made the comment there about the people that you don't care, well, I just, you know, I wholeheartedly disagree with that.
I'm not saying you don't care.
Well, you made that comment, I just wanted to verify that we do care. And so, I just wanted to make sure you understood that. Now, as far as what may have happened six or seven years ago, I don't recall that, don't know that, but all I would say is this, West Virginia law requires that if any student or adult, anyone brings a weapon on school property, there are certain repercussions. Now, for students, that is an automatic expulsion of one year. Now, did that happen? I'm not familiar with it, don't recall. But if it did, which once again, I don't know if it did or not. But if it did, I do know that I don't recall us right off of us having a hearing, which would require the school to report that, Mr. Minkiff, the state police. If it were true, and if the gun was there, they would have an expulsion hearing before the board, and it's a mandatory one-year expulsion from school. Now, once again, I don't know how you got your information, do you think that's true? It may be true, but if it is, it's not something I recall, or anyone, if anyone else does. But, once again-
I apologize, I'll call it a legend incident.
Well, that's what we have to be careful of, because, you know, we all see what's on social media. I read many of these things on there that I know not to be factual.
Right.
But some things may be, and that's, you know, and it's a good forum for people to share that. But, you know, we just have to be careful that we don't believe everything we see there. But all I'm saying is that, you know, when these things happen, the school takes them very seriously. Many are reported to legal authorities, and they're all reported to the superintendent, who then look at and take necessary steps. If need be, if there is any, it seems that it's warranted that a student's done something that violates either local or state law or code, then things happen to bring them before us for action.
Right.
Okay.
And I apologize, I did not mean to think, for any of you to think that, I did not think that you didn't-
I appreciate that.
-worry about our students or anything like that. The incident that occurred happened on a Thursday, my kids came home. One of them actually is in the same grade as the, where the incident occurred, and he told me about what happened, and said that, you know, they let the child go, and he's since seen him at school since this has happened. And my big concern is, it doesn't matter, this is an incident, okay? But this incident is something that I've tried to let people know before that we could help a lot of this stuff by just doing some simple, common sense measures. I mean, just like, would anybody be able to bring, like, a big knife or anything like that into a school if they had to go through a metal detector? We need two metal detectors in that school. And we also, and no, we're not treating it like a prison, but you should not be allowed to go out to your truck or your car at any time if you're a student, and come back in without going through the same metal detectors. I mean, that's just, stuff like that is common sense. And that are just stuff that I think about all the time. I even brought up the idea about putting in two garage doors in the two main hallways to help protect against things like fire, God forbid, anything like that. But to keep kids from going down those hallways and getting access, or even adults, when there's a lot of people around, like at a basketball game, or at some kind of function. I know that Appalachian Power used to hold functions over there because they wanted to inform the community about something. People could just walk down those halls and do anything they needed to do. And these are just, that's just a common sense measure, if you have the ability to shut down the hallway and put a big stop sign on it. You just say, hey, stop, on both sides. You can tell the kids, hey, well, there's something bad here, we need to turn around and go back. Or if we put metal detectors in at two places, and you inform the kids, hey, look, we're going to have these metal detectors here. One, they shouldn't be worried about it anyway, because they should have no reason to be worried about it. They should have no reason to have to say, wow, did somebody bring in a big knife today? Did somebody bring in a gun we don't know about? If we do just a couple of common sense things, and talk to the kids, say hello. It's not against the law for teachers, and we need to bring, there is no sense of community anymore. I mean, you guys, I wish there was, and I'm sure, like it used to be, where, you know, neighbors talk to neighbors, and friends talk to friends more often. If you don't have a phone, you are not considered in a community. I cannot stand talking on my phone, because it is the most impersonal thing you'll ever see. I cannot stand it. That is my concern, that we are getting so far away from, we're trying to help these students become better, but when they have to worry about watching their back, or when they have to worry about whether somebody brought a gun, or a knife, or anything to school. I mean, that, they're not going to be functional, and you're going to have problems. Their grades are going to drop, they're going to stop talking to people, they're going to hit the press. It happens.
Recently, we had an LCHS meeting in Lake County High School. During the presentation that was made to the board at that meeting, members of the staff shared with us some activities they've been doing. One of which got my attention there because of being able to speak to kids and learn more about it. They had a particular activity that the whole school staff was involved in, in finding out more about each individual student at school. And they did it in a very unique way, this was on the first professional learning day, I think, where they had a lot of time. Where they had all the students' names on the wall, then there's teachers and all the staff took part in identifying things they knew about those kids. Mr. Miller's checking his head, yes. And it turned out, but their whole point there was to find out whose names are up there that we don't know a lot about.
Right.
And then, they then took the initiative then to start working towards, they as a staff, you know, finding out more about that particular child.
Right.
And working with them, finding out about, so, you know, I think they are doing things, and I'm not, you know, we initiated, but on their own, to try to do that great thing, to become more personal with the kids there.
Right. And they should be, that's a great, that's a great idea. And that's the thing that I keep trying to say too, is that, you know, when you say hello to somebody, you know, maybe they need it.
Right, well, I agree.
When we have our teachers around, just let them walk around and say, hey, you got time with the quick class? Go out there and just joke with the kids. Let them know, hey, if you need to talk to somebody, hey, that's what we're there for. We're not just there to say, hey, if you don't get this grade, you're going to fail. I mean, it just does not work.
I think, once again, I think they're doing those things, it seems that, from what we've heard, they're doing that.
Well, that is great to hear. I would like to submit that I did have those ideas before about that same issue that has come up again. If anybody does have any further questions about that, and no, I am not trying to take guns out of people's hands that should have a gun. But anybody that goes into that school that is not a student or a teacher of some kind, those kids do not need them, they don't need-
No one, except the officer out there, may have a gun.
That is correct.
I mean, that's by law, so no one else, nobody.
That is correct. And I do not want anybody to think I'm trying to take people's guns away, because that's not my intention at all. I want these kids to be safe. Because if we don't make them safe, then we can't get them to open up about things. You'd be surprised.
I agree with you.
Now, does anybody have any questions?
Does anybody have anything in particular? Doesn't seem so, but, you know, we thought about, you know, we looked into discussing some of the things you mentioned the last time, some of the activity, the things that you're talking about in the hall, they seem to have some, you know, whether they were going to be, have to go through the various state levels of approval that we're, you know, we're concerned about. The metal detector, you know, that sounds good, but then as we look, you know, as we think about that, everything has a negative part to it. One is, you're having these metal detectors, is who want to get these metal detectors and all, I don't know what the cost is, but, you know, you get them, it's like, well, then you're going to have to have people who are monitoring those.
Right.
Now, who's that going to be? I don't know. But there have to be people, you want to have two of them, well, there have to be people there monitoring as those kids come in. And then, throughout the school day, if, you know, like you say, if you go into the car or something, wherever comes in, then who's going to be monitoring those? So, one became the supervision of, you know, somebody monitoring the detector itself. The other was, that we, what we heard about, as we got input on it, was what effect was that going to have on when you have eight hundred-plus students all coming to school at the same time?
Right.
Trying to get in there? That it could have a negligible effect on the, on our transportation system, because our bus, you know, all schools are really-
Rigid about that.
-their schedules are primed on what goes on out here at the high school.
Right.
So, if it would have, you know, if it started, you're backing up all these kids coming in at the same time, you know, what's that going to do to that? So, you know, we, it's not that we haven't thought about it and discussed what you mentioned to us, but this time, I don't think-
Has there been any thought about maybe, like, either staggering a bus schedule, or have it set up to where the kids come in, maybe like fifteen or twenty minutes?
Once, when you do that-
You start school a little bit later?
When you do one thing out here at this high school, we've had, Mr. Minkiff could tell us, where they have to allocate so much time during the day and bank time, or perhaps the time that we have to call it. That impact had, it ripples its way all through this county, because all these schools are based upon, their schedules are based upon-
That school bus run at that time?
Well, that's, even at the elementary or middle schools, their, whatever their schedules are, their high school kids are coming in too.
Right.
And so, everybody gets affected, so you, you know, it's easy to think, well, you can just-
But what about that, you do it the whole county, why? I mean, all you're doing is just shifting the school time back from, let's say if it starts at eight o'clock, well, school starts at eight-twenty for everybody in the county.
Well, but all you've done, that was just change the day of the school. You haven't freed up that time, it's going to take them to get in that building that was, was going to back up the buses. It's not the time they get there, it's the time it takes to get eight hundred-plus kids into the school building.
Right.
So, whether they start at eight o'clock, or eight-thirty, it doesn't change it, it's just going to, that effect, that negative effect of getting in school is just going to be further back. So, that really doesn't, and once again, you know, I don't want to belabor this, but it just has effect there that we don't really think about until you talk to the people in transportation, and then the schools, and how tight their schedules already are.
Right.
As to how, you know, that's not, I wouldn't use the word easy, but some things seem simpler than they are, and that's not as simple as it seems.
Right, and I can understand that. I mean, to me, it just, I guess just being a parent, I would rather it be a situation where they were coming in being a lot safer, because I hear from my kids and my kids' friends all the time about, you know, bullying and stuff like that, because they talk to a lot of people in that school, and it just, they seem worried a lot. And I'm, I'm, as a concern there, you guys are probably just seeing me, but there's other parents out there who share the same concerns out of it.
Well, I'm sure there are.
The only thing is, is that I'm willing to come here and talk to you guys when most of them are just like, just let it go, just, I'm like, no, I can't let it go. If I have a concern about my kids, and it doesn't matter if my kids go to that school or not, I mean, if I have a concern, then I have to speak up, because if we, you know, somebody still wants to say that a good people don't do anything, nothing gets done.
Where do most of those problems start at? It starts at home.
Right.
Very little anybody can do about that.
Right, and if it starts at home, you know, we have to be able to figure out a way to, you know, talk to our kid, these kids-
And the law, and this country's going downhill, and that's exactly what, why you see all this stuff.
Get them to be able to talk to these teachers, and to say, hey, if you can make them comfortable talking to you, and they want to come and say, hey, this is what's going on at my house, I need somebody to help. If we show them that we are concerned about things like that, then I think it would be a lot simpler for them, and it'll make them feel a lot better about coming out and saying, you know what, there's something going on at home, there's, you know, drugs, or all this other stuff, there's bullying, all this other stuff that I have to worry about. They don't want to speak to anybody, because they are afraid of what's going to happen if they did. And if we do that, if we cut them off in the one place where they need to be able to open up their mind, they will stay that way. They'll stay afraid. Fear leads to anger.
Well, this, I think we, before, we encourage anybody who thinks that there's bullying going on, or anything that's, should be going on, to let somebody, a teacher there. We even have a hotline where you can report bullying, so, you know, we, one of the, if there's, if that's going on, they need to tell someone, and they shouldn't be afraid, because every day they tell, it's going to be anonymously done.
Right, well-
So, we encourage them to do that, anything that's going on.
That's been my problem, is, you know, I've tried to tell my kids before, do not, if you know anybody that's having some kind of problem, if they cannot go and talk to their parents, or a teacher, or the principal, then let them come talk to me. And I've had to hear about kids who have had problems, but they are so afraid, and so scared, they will not open their mouth up about anything. And, you know, those are the kids that scare me. Not because I'm afraid they're going to do something to somebody, but I'm afraid they're going to do something to themselves. Because they have a low self-esteem.
Well, once again, when I said there earlier about the staff out there, I think they're taking the initiative to try to, you know, encourage kids to be, feel better about themselves, and that they can speak to their teachers. Because we even had an example shared with us of some kids that were, you know, some kids were shy, and, you know, or not active, talk out, that some of those that were like that, as they began to do this, all of a sudden were coming in and speaking to somebody, or speaking to teachers that they felt comfortable with.
Right.
So, you know, hopefully that will help with that.
Well, that's good to hear, I appreciate it. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, I appreciate it. Okay, let's go to our next item on the agenda. We're going to stay over at Lake County High School. Matt Miller and David Agnes are going to talk about the aerospace engineering program, but going into aerospace, maybe we're going to leave the high school, I don't know.
We could, we could.
Gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
The handout that you have is just some, just some basic information about our aerospace engineering and the curriculum, from the courses it's offered. I was asked by the State Department about adding a program, and I worked with them for a little bit. We've got a fifty thousand dollar grant to take care of this, and just use one of our staff members to teach the classes for this. The fifty thousand dollars was just a, just a basic setup cost, and to cover things for several years. So, we're financially okay with that, in terms of supporting the program. Waiting on a grant to come in, I have to give it a try, and see if we've got it, because one of the things that's part of the curriculum we're going to add is a flight simulator for our students. And with aerospace engineering, you're basically covering anything that deals with, you know, airplanes flying. The kids do a ton of work, and they base what they're working on, tons of problem solving, they've got to design and come up with something, they've got to test it and see how their design holds up. So, everything that they do is very applicable to the real world, in terms of jobs. We have partnered with the airport in Charleston. We are also part of, partnered with the West Virginia Department of Edom this. So, these kids that go through this program will be able to leave from here, and Marshall has started a program. So, they'll have an opportunity to possibly just leave here and be able to go to Marshall, and they're working on a flight school that they're going to put at Jaeger Airport, that our kids will have an opportunity that's close to home, and be able to leave here with those skills and go there, and possibly end up with a very good paying job, you know, through this. I'll let Mr. Agnes talk a little bit about the program, the things that he's done.
Is Mr. Agnes the instructor?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, a couple of things I really want to point out to you, get to the last page, where it says the key features. Couple of things that I want to talk to you about. When we look down at the dual credit and industry certification, okay, currently, I just, was just up in Charleston for the training with Marshall. We're working on two, two engineering credits, two engineering classes for credit through Marshall University. So, that's dual credit component, starting to get together, everything's starting to come in place, you know, you've got to make sure all the boxes are checked. So, we're working on, now, the industry certification, there is two categories of industry certification they can choose to receive. One is in Solid Edge, which is a 3D designing software program. So, where they actually design a component completely from their own, like you would as an engineer or a draftsman. And then, the other one is in data collection and programming the sensors that collect information. An example that we would see is, like, we was over at West Hamlin at the water plant, they put sensors on the pipe to determine water flow. Okay, well, the kids learn how to program those sensors to collect specific data from those, and that's one of the components, and that's a possible industry certification they can get. There's a test that they choose to take at the end of the course with that industry in order to receive the certification, so that's up to them. They get, I don't, I don't tell them, you have to take this, no. You have the option, we're training you, whatever you want to do, however you want to do it, guys, I can get you the resources, we'll get you there, you can take the test if you wish. So, that's two possible things that they can choose from there. Now, the next thing I want to talk about is, is the fact that, the technology and the software. We're lucky, a lot of the software and stuff that we're using is free, okay? So, the Solid Edge is an industry standard software package that does 3D CAD design. So, and it was free, and it currently runs on the software systems that we have in our building. Couple of other things is that, just to let you know, they do have, it's called a project-based learning, but they do have actual assessments. They have to show proof of knowledge in math skills and science skills, on top of developing a product. Now, that's just a couple of overviews from the stuff that's on the back here, okay? Now, I want to talk to you on the, on the third page in the middle there, I want to talk to you a little bit about course one, because that's what I'm in the middle of right now, okay? So, to give you an idea, kid rolls in, first thing you're going to do is, hey, guys, guess what? I need you to design a pilot chair for me. I need you to design a frame, I need you to test it. Okay, what do we need to do? We make a list, and, well, we got to figure out how you use the software. So, we learn how to use the software that designs it. Okay, you've got to design, how are we going to test it? Well, we learn how the software will actually go through and do the stress test for you, okay? Well, we need to print a model, because you got to present it. So, we learn how to 3D print. Do you see where the layers are coming in? All including in this is a math lesson and a science lesson that's broken down. Keep going, okay? The second thing is, design something that'll fly on a kite. Boom, same process, go through it again, what do we got to do? We're into one right now, learning projectile motions, and it's an entire physics lesson combined in with math and problem solving. It has a direct unit pulled straight from Algebra I in there, plus an entire physics unit that I teach in my physics class. And that's just the first three projects. We've got three more together, and that's just course one. And that's what I'm saying, I want to stay in course one, but we're right, we're talking-
How long does each course last?
We're running a semester of two class periods. So, it's equivalent of one normal school year in a class period time.
Now- And the projects are based on multiple weeks into the project, and then changed to a different project?
The kids, this was kind of interesting, who was we had in? Armstrong.
Armstrong.
Armstrong came in and- Armstrong came in and, uh, checked out, checked out our CTE program and did a little walkthrough.
Well, it was not just Armstrong here in Hamlin. It was the, um, corporate office on Butler P A, I can see.
And, uh,
My class was, that program started the first of the school year.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Um, my kids were sitting down and one of the things they had to do is, um, project manage. So, they had to sit down with a calendar and go, I tell them a cut date. That's about the only thing I really do. I said, sometime around this date, you got to be done. So, they had to go through the list of all the accomplished tasks that they're going to have to do in this project and start laying it out on a calendar. Said, we need to try to have this done on this date. We need to try to have this done on this date. We need to have our meetings this day. And they just go through and they lay out our calendar. And that was one of the things that, um, one of the gentlemen from Armstrong went like, that's like a project management calendar. He said, we do those all the time and stuff like that. And I was like, yeah. Now, the only other thing I'd like to tell you guys is, is this. This has impacted more than just this class. Okay? And then here's the reason why. We got introduced to the software Solid Edge and design. Well, I took my physics kids. Said, hey, there's, there's a apparatus that we used to demo, uh, something. I tried to see, see if you can design it yourself. So, we designed it. We 3D printed it. We tested it. We found out, hey, our design was a little bit off. But we learned the physics by developing the item to demonstrate the physics principle. That was a bleed over. So, and this is probably going to continue. You bring in a new program and it's just not just about that program. No, it's the bleed over, hey, this program bringing this. We got, oh, we've got this. We can do this now. Yes. Okay, keep going, keep going, keep going. Like 3D designing of bones and stuff or then animal class or whatever. Okay. You know, and that's all I like to say, guys, and I mean, thank y'all.
And a good thing for that is that, uh, I've been working with a couple of folks at the Department of Ed and, uh, one of the things that, uh, they're working on is we'll have to, uh, align their curriculum is that when these kids go through this program, they'll have to complete four classes. So, they're looking to get two embedded science credits, um, from this. One being possibly physics. Uh, so that would be a less, a class they wouldn't have to worry about taking because it's, it's already embedded in here. So, that's something we're looking at with the next, hopefully, year.
But we're, we're, we're still working on things. But, uh, thank you all for letting us do this. I mean.
How many students are participating now?
Right now, we've got five. We, we, we got a little bit of a late start getting the word out to the kids, but.
How many can you accommodate?
I could run 20 per course. Okay. Um, 16, 18, a little bit better. Okay? You get past 20, 24, 25, 30, because I've got some friends that are in this program right now. They got, they hit 20 when he goes, when I hit 25, it started getting a little rough. He goes, when I was about 20, 21, 22, he said, everything was pretty good. He goes, I don't know what it is. He says, the minute I hit 25, it's like, okay, I don't. Only thing I can imagine to you is, is working with a small group, pretend you had five different manufacturing processes going on in five different directions at the same time and you're the foreman in charge. Because it isn't me telling them, you do this today, you do this today. No. It's them making the engineering decisions and the stuff and going down that path, that way to do the task that they wish to do. So, only thing I'm there is to just try to make sure is that, okay, everybody's going in the general right direction. Okay. Stop. We need to do a math lesson. That was today. We had to stop. We had to shut down. I had to teach. Okay. They were doing Excel. They were learning how to input data, create a formula to output a number that they were supposed to. Okay? Well, it, guess what? It crashed and burned. Stop. Stop. Team teach. I taught. One of the kids that knew how to do it, you take those two and I'll take these two. We'll sit down and we'll teach. So, we went through. Done it. Okay. Come back tomorrow. We may practice. And I may sneak them one in if they got to do it. The reason is, is they, they have to create a document that's presentable to a manufacturer or a company. So, they have to be able to explain what they did in the Excel document to somebody. They have to present it. They have to talk to people about it and say, I did this. This is where this number came from. This is how I calculated it. That's a lot. So, that, that's some of the stuff that we did.
And we have a class set up with simulated workplace. So, the kids in there all have jobs, roles and responsibility. And even though it's a small group, uh, they don't have a lot of town time. Because once they come in, they get started, they just roll right along for the two class periods. So, they stay busy.
Now, that, that sounds like it's a good, a great work, but I'm making a confusion that two class periods effectively. You know, because I know there have been times when it's, you know, it would sound like a good idea and then at times you were running.
And, and, and you pointed out a good point. And, and this was an analysis of one of, um, the team leaders. Each time there was a project, they have a team leader. One of the team leaders sat there and goes, you know, we, it's, we have less time because we have two periods. I go, why? She goes, well, because it seems like we've got more time to do it. Then we realize at the end, we have and do not have more time to do it. They, you know, the feeling of, oh, I've got two class periods. And she goes, no, no. It's, it, no, it doesn't work like that. We got to, we got to. You know, it's going to.
Well, they're, they're having to make a bad confusion those two class periods.
Yes. And they learn that the hard way. And then you're right. I mean, that's just it. But it, it's been a joy. It, it's, it's.
We predicted to have four students in that by the end of the year and scheduling would come in issue. Then we had a few kids once school started. I had, I had roughly 13 in mind. And we looked at 10, but we, we ended up with a smaller group. Built some scheduling, but, um, I think we're going to be pretty good for this year coming up. Um, probably at least what we're talking, maybe 15 kids.
15, 15.
Probably the minimum, at least 15 in there.
And we've had several come up to us and go, it's like, okay, are you doing this next year? Yes. Okay. Can I do that? I said, yeah. Well, Greg, you want to be? Yeah, yeah, you're good. Yes. You know, the, the sad part is I had to turn a few seniors. People are going to be seniors away for next year because they need to complete their four-course sequence. But, you know, it, it, it has, word of mouth has done a lot. It's probably going to be even more so after we start getting into a few more of the projects. And then.
I guess we still have a wind tunnel to purchase and, you know, the flight simulator and some other.
And then we'll be flying drones and, and, um, is it, I always get them confused. Is it Art trip or Buckton? Which one is, is the gentleman?
Hart.
Hart. Mr. Hartrip is going to, he's already donated his entire rocket collection that he had left over from when he was there. And he's going to come down whenever we do the rocket launch and come down and he's going to be our expert on, on, on that. And, uh, he is so thrilled. I'll, I'll.
I know another gentleman like Hart. He's real persistent. He's talking.
Please, please, well, I'll, I'll, I'll set the word out because it's going to be hopefully right before Thanksgiving. You know, it's one of these things. They're in charge of the schedule. So, at a certain point, we're shooting before, before Thanksgiving. They have to completely 3D design a nose cone to be able to put a, um, altimeter in there or any other, accelerometer or anything else. And then we have to go test launches. Now, um, Art trip did tell me that there's a few engines I shouldn't use because they're a little bit, they're looking on the larger sides.
You can get in trouble.
Yeah.
Trust me. I can show you a, uh, Harold dispatch article that will prove that.
Yeah, we want to be ahead of time on that because you probably don't want to use that one. I said, okay.
He, he likes this thing.
Do you guys have any questions, of course? I think we can ask him.
That sounds like.
Four-year program? Is it?
Two-year program, four courses.
No, I mean, uh, the next post-secondary, aren't there some colleges and universities now getting into?
Yeah, Marshall is on board because we have partnered with them.
Just thinking about our students that watch.
Yes.
And, and please don't ever think that they're locked in just to go into the aeronautics, okay? Because they're getting the basis for engineering too. So, please understand that, you know, that may be the aeronautics theme, but they're also getting all the basic skills for a basic engineering course. So, if they went civil, they went mechanical, they went electrical. It doesn't make any difference. They're still getting the fundamentals of basic engineering. So, it's not that we're this way. It's kind of like this because MCTC is, um, MCTC and the Robert C. Berg Institute are bringing on an aeronautics component too. Um, MCTC is doing the two-year mechanics program. And RCPI is bringing on something about manufacturing. And I can't remember it because it was just in the paper. I remember reading the article on it. So, there's, it's kind of like, like, and I don't know if y'all saw the article about the West Virginia-made helicopter?
Yes, I saw.
Yeah, that's like, I was like, okay, this is interesting. It's like, yeah. But it, it's, don't, don't ever think that it's that, that, that focused. It's, okay, we've got this many areas because of some of the components that were built in. Because the engineering, the two engineering courses are just the fundamental, basic engineering classes that every engineering major at Marshall will take. So, that's, 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 that's just it. So.
I'm taking credit for these. So, that's what they're going to take later on. Save them quite a bit of money. Plus the two, the options and getting the other two engineering classes by the time they graduate beyond this. So, it's, it's a big thing.
Yeah.
Anybody have anything else?
Thanks.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, we have one more presentation this afternoon. Mr. Gosney, Greg Gosney, maintenance director, talking about the, uh, Lake County High School football field locker room.
Hey, Carol.
Mr. Gosney.
Do you hear me all right? You awake?
Yes, I can hear you, Greg. Thank you.
All right, home's your wake.
Home wake. I'm waking, listen, buddy.
Um, I guess we'll talk about football field locker.
Or whatever locker room.
Huh?
Or whatever locker room.
Whatever.
A locker room.
So. Um, looking at, looking at over there, I know Mr. Minkid and I have discussed this with, and talked with Dave Ferguson the other day. They had the plans for that. He was working up some. Most of these are around 22, about 22 hundred square feet. Uh, it's according what you want to put in them. All right. So, if you want locker rooms, both sides, that side, and you want shires and all those stuff. That's idealistic. But if you do like a 40, I was looking at a 45 by 50, which is about 2200. 50 by 50 is about 2500 square feet. Two locations there that you could look at this. One in the original design on the school, I know, was to put the bleachers in and the bleachers be right, or the dressing room, locker rooms, whatever, be right behind it. You got another option over by where the, where the school's at, where the auxiliary gym comes out. You got that option in there that you could put something like that in there. The only thing with that, we run an issue with the fire marshal, something wooden. You have to be, I think it's about 16 feet away from a building, a wooden structure, unless you have a, a sprinkler system in there. But I, well, I, it's come down to, we've, we've looked at block, doing a block type building or versus some other way. If you do a building, if you do a metal building right now, I just looking at some prices here, this, this is ballpark. This is a 50 by 60. You do a metal building, uh, with a roll-up door, uh, with a couple of doors in there for access, uh, you're looking at just a metal building of $18,000 or something like that. Now, that doesn't include your flooring and things like that. Now, a lot of what I would recommend, if you're going to do, going to go that route, a lot of the expense when you get into ZMM and all these designs, as you get into designing it, they do a lot of things underground. Your electrical, your plumbing, all that stuff underground. I don't know if you've ever heard of a wet wall? Anybody know what a wet wall is? Wet wall, it used to be years ago, schools used them considerably. They've kind of gotten away from them now, which I hate that. If you were looking at, just to be in a dressing room, if you had a wet wall, it's a three-foot wall that you put towards the center. You do all my plumbing, all my electrical from within there and then up overhead. So, you wouldn't have to, you'd have one, one, basically one sewer line or one electric conduit come in the building. It'd be actually underground into the, into the concrete. So, if you go, go with the design with a wet wall, it gives you easy access, uh, building that and then putting your shires, putting your, your toilets, your urinals, all these things where you want them. Um, and then doing all your electrical work and have a secured area where your electric work can come in. You section off one end up for electrical, because you can't have electrical by the water. So, you go to the backside of it and do electrical room there and then branch out wherever you want it overhead. So, those are options that you have. Come down to, do you want a metal building? Do you want a block building? Or if you wanted a cost and you want to be able to do this fairly, uh, quickly and do it, uh, reasonably, uh, I think the metal, metal building is the way to go. Now, these are rated, uh, you get them rated 150 miles per hour winds and things like that. So, those are options that you can do. If you do the block, the block, of course, is going to, uh, trickle your price when you do something like that.
Well, Greg, does any of these buildings you're talking about have public restrooms in them?
This, this building, you could have the public restrooms on the outside. Outside, you can make outside. In, you could go, whatever you want is designed there. We have to re, we, we know where the track is going right now. We know where that's at. So, that's within that first set of gates. So, we don't have to worry about anything with that. All we've got to worry about is our main concession, our main, uh, bleacher system and our concession stand. That would be all something to play. And right back behind that, you could, you could go to length of that, whatever you want to go with it. Uh, I know you could on one end of it. I don't know, it used to be years ago locker rooms had your weight rooms and things like that in there. But, you know, you could do something like that towards the end of it or incorporate that in, in it also.
Greg, what we've been kind of thinking about would be locker rooms for visiting home teams and have public restrooms on the end of it. Uh, because we, you know, we realize at this point, some activities could be conducted out there, even if you don't have your bleacher. You know, we see this whole thing as, as we've said many times in stages. This is, you know, the first stage was getting the field elevated properly, the drainage and all that. Okay? But we weren't able to do it properly, you know, and, and hopefully that's where we are. Now, we get to this phase and this, the next, that seems obviously that you need to have locker rooms and restrooms before it can be utilized by anybody. Because I know there's been some interest. Because even if you don't have bleachers yet and if you don't have lights, you can still, uh, practice football there. You can practice soccer there. Uh, the middle school was, uh, had, uh, an interest in practicing football there. Uh, but without, uh, restrooms and, and those kind of things, it just makes it, you know, it's not very feasible to do. So, we thought about having locker rooms and with public restrooms for, you know, use by anybody that might be here. But, and I know from what Mr. Minkid told us here earlier, and he spoke, I guess, briefly with Mr., uh, what's that? Ferguson. I couldn't think of Dave last night. Ferguson, that is AM. Uh, that he has, uh, shown a one-story building. But where are we as far as storage then for, you know, right now at the Lions Club field, our football team, you know, they have everything and they have a storage area. And then somebody brought up, if you were thinking long-term, that the referees, the, some, you know, have to have an office. If we were to have a, a building, whatever made out of, uh, although I have my preference, have, uh, being a two-story structure with the first floor being, uh, the locker rooms and restrooms and, uh, for the teams and then the public restroom, you know, at the one end of it. And then the second floor being the storage area for equipment, all those things. And then one area that may be allocated off for the referees. I mean, I know.
You're talking, if you want to do a two-story, you're talking totally block. Everything else changes. It changes everything drastically because your support up above, it changes everything in that.
Well.
Just a total design, even a tall getting up for somebody to work on. That increases your cost on that.
I understand that. But, I mean, this is, I personally believe, nobody else, for certain, chime in with yours. I've never thought that what we wanted to do was just do something hurriedly or just for a while. But what if we did do it well so that down the road, 20 years or it, or whatever it is down the road, that it's still viable and is still usable. So, if we're going to do something, let's do it right. That was our, uh, That was our, uh, philosophy as far as the field itself, you know, why don't we, let's make this thing where we don't have to go back later on and redo some things here, and just have it done properly. And that, that's why I personally think that that's the way this should be. Uh, you know, even if we, you know, if we had a, uh, you know, if it's only one story, you didn't have the second story on there, or it could be added later, or whatever, that, at least that first floor would be, having the locker rooms and the public restroom. It doesn't address the idea of the, uh, the, uh, storage of, uh, equipment and all those kind of things, and the referee. But I just think what you need to do, if you want to do something, do it right, so you're not going back later on, five, ten years from now, and having to, you know, redo something. So I'm not really a metal fan, I mean, I know it'd be, it'd be quicker, and you could have something there. But then, down the road, maybe, we won't be on here, but somebody will be, they're gonna be, we're gonna have to build us some locker rooms that are more durable and, you know, for long-term use. But that's just me-
I think you're at the point, what you're talking about, then we need to get a designed and all that architect in on it, and design a two-story structure, if that's what you want.
Greg, can we build the building as a two-story, and just complete the bottom part, and have the second story there, but not finish the second story?
You still have to design it structurally to support whatever you're doing, so.
Right, right. I'm not in favor of putting a roof on one, and then later tearing that roof off, and then building a second story.
Yeah, there, you really don't, when you get into doing something like that, structurally it wasn't designed for that, and you have issues with it, cracks and structures like that. So if you're gonna do a two-story, you need to go all the way on a two-story, and do it that way, but.
Well, I'm just thinking, once again, to have that, all the, uh, components of what you would ideally like to have there, in the end, I mean, it seems like two stories usually, because it's easier to go up than it is to go out, right? As far as cost-
Oh, you've got, you've got areas over there, like, you've got an area back towards the backside where the pond area is there, and that could be storage area. You're never, in football, or any of these coaches can tell you, you never have enough storage area. I don't care what you do, new things come along, so your storage area is always gonna be an issue, you're always gonna need more storage. So you could go towards that backside, have your storage area there, have a separate place for officials and whatever you want to have, it's just, whatever you want. I mean, it just comes down to what do you want, and how much money you want to spend. It's just, and that, that's, we could, we could spend a hundred thousand, we can spend a half million, it's just whatever we want to spend.
Do we get to choose, we-
Yeah. Just pencil it in, pencil in whatever you want, but it, it's just, I, I mean, a lot of people, you have, uh, I know Spring Hill, all these other places, they, they've come on board, and they've had the crunch and do numbers and things to get what they've won. And they've done things to do that. We don't have the luxury, as we all know, but the FBA doesn't finance fields, so they just don't do it. We have to spend local funds, so it comes down to how much, how much do we want to spend, uh, for money. I mean, we, I agree with you, I go two stories and everything, but, you know, getting to the other floor and, uh, things like that. I think you, realistically, you can't use that second floor for a lot of stories, because of carrying things upstairs and things like that, and size of equipment, height of equipment, uh, popular for the door repairer, you have to have fork trucks, stuff like that, to move things like that. So the only thing I can see really benefiting is small things you can store upstairs, or have in separate rooms upstairs. Far as stories, I, I, usually upstairs storage doesn't work out too well.
That's what we need to think about.
Now, Mr. Rick, have no one seen the plan that Dave has?
Not yet, now, he is supposed to send those to us.
We haven't seen them either. I wonder if it's a one-story or anything?
It is a one-story, I did a text with Dave this morning.
Very few people do a two-story in, in a facilities like this. I mean, just the feasibility of doing it. And, uh, you know, if you've got football, you know, all these stuff, you don't want people upstairs all day long. And they have some of that heavy equipment, uh, you want to put a weight room.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd say it'd have to be that, I'm just trying to think how you're going to accommodate the things you eventually would need, you know, and I just thought it was easier for them, usually more economical to go up rather than down, in space.
Uh, if you've been over to, like I say, you've got the sections towards the back, over there, there's a huge section there towards the back of the end zone, which is ideal, but to tie it into your field right there, where you come off out of the track into that, that would be my equipment storage area.
I'm looking at the field, which side we come out?
You're looking towards the front side, where the, where the kitchen is, down towards the, where the pond is.
So basically, the field is to the left.
Yeah, and most of it's over on this side. Area there, and that huge area right in behind it, uh, starts out narrow down this side, but it gets bigger on up, then you've got over the hill, places like that. Again, and you have the area over by the auxiliary gym, that lot of, a huge area there that you could use also. Now, if I was doing something there, that's where I'd want to do my weight room.
That would be the area in my weight room.
Well, I mean, weight rooms are great, and all that, you know, that thing, but I'm just trying to think, to make it usable, you know, fairly soon, uh, even if it isn't to accommodate, you know, up and forth, like the games and those kind of things. To make it available, because, once again, you know, we had the interest from the middle school footballing, but, you know, they, all their material things are out here at the Lions Club, so there, you know, all their equipment also. Now, they're gonna have to take a bus over to practice and do things, even if they're gonna practice, they suppose. There's so many things that will go on here. And I think soccer would be the same thing, they could, uh, of course, they don't, I don't guess, they don't have, they have quite as much equipment, you know, they, that's not-
No, I have a little shed, uh, there by the gazebo.
But at the same time, for them to be out there and to use it, you know, they're able to be, uh, having restrooms and all would be, you know, a good point.
I think you could do the restrooms, and like I said, the, the locker rooms and all that. As far as different programs, you could take one building, separate building, and section it off to different programs for the stories.
Right.
That'd be the ideal way to do it, because you're not gonna be able to store everything for everybody who wants one.
Well, that's what we need to, I guess we're just kicking around ideas here.
Well, if we could build a building, say, out of metal, a fifty to sixty for eighteen thousand, and you said it would be four times that much for a block, or-
I mean, I guess, and I, to give you figures, I'm just saying, a block's usually, there's about three dollars a block now, like. I've tried getting contact with Mike Stone, I don't know if Mike's doing this anymore, but he's, uh, I've tried, certainly, Mike's one of the best, but to get an idea of what it would cost on the block, something like that.
So for less than a hundred thousand, we should be able to get a building that size out of block? To me, that's not bad.
That's, that's something we would have to bid out, because we'd have to bid out CY's board accounts, that's what you do.
Well, what if, I, you know, and-
You pick your size and what you want it to be, and things like that.
And, and just taking a step further, what I would like, uh, envision out there is it ties in with the school campus. I love where each one of the brick, just like the school is. So I want a brick around that block. I want to look, you know, if, if this is the next piece-
Lighter.
And, well, and can, I guess you can make your foundation, you know, larger than-
That's not the problem with the brick. You can never, you'll never match that brick back there, you'll get close, you'll get crushed.
I'm just saying, you want, I'm just, I, I'd like to, it may take a while, and looking, obviously, we've gone, you know, ten, bless you now, but let's have something that everybody can be proud of, you know, years from now, and, and do things, and, and do them well, to where it all, you know, you get that art done, and it fits in with the whole campus and everything. Because everything else out there is looking good, you know, all the other fields that they've developed are, you know, top-notch. And, uh, this one's, of course, more complicated, and there's more into the, you know, the, all the things that have to be at a, at a football field. But, uh, it could be used, if, if, you know, soccer's expressed an interest, you know, that, you know, that'd be just a scheduling issue for soccer to be able to use there. Uh, if they use soccer, they would be able to use there, but, you know, the problem for them is to come and, and, uh, not have, uh, restrooms facilities for the, those that come and watch the games and things like that, for them to practice. Mr. O'Donnell, do you have a quizzical look on your face?
No, it's, it's just encouraging to see the soccer coaches here. I mean, where, there's no one from football here, I don't know if people are working on it.
Right.
Okay. Um, you know, there just, there doesn't seem to be a huge drive or interest from all sports to use this space. There's two goalposts that have been up there for a year and a half. Um, you know, Coach Carpenter's here, I could easily see the boys playing there next season, um, the boys' football team. You don't need a huge amount of bleachers, you don't need lights, um-
Boys soccer?
Boys soccer, yeah. You'd need two goals, um, portable pair of bleachers, um, and you'd have all the boys' home games on a regulation-sized, nice new field, um, with the building you're talking about.
Right. And you have restrooms for the public.
Right. And like I always said, it, it takes kids and athletes playing on this field, and being, and, and to see them playing there, to get, I think, other people to buy into it, you know, as long as it's an empty space, and you're just cutting the grass, no one's using it.
I agree with you. That's why I think it could be ideally used, and, you know, I've even seen some comments about, uh, ban.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know, it's a football field, but, you know, that's what even, you know, colleges, the ban comes out and they go on the football field. Yeah, they both use the same field, it's not, uh, it doesn't preclude, uh, ban being able to use the field, just because you want to, you know, try to address the overall needs of the school.
And we, we used, uh, Hammond, Hammond Middle Soccer used, um, the girls' field for our home games, all, all our home games except one. And it was great, I mean, Dallas gave us, you know, we had the use of the concession stand, but I'm sure whoever's coaching next year would use either field, perhaps the backfield, you know, try and get-
Well, when, when boys' soccer first began, it was kind of assumed that they too were going to, it was a soccer field, it wasn't a girls' soccer field. Then the coach at that time chose to stay away from the Lions Club, so, but, you know, that would be, so, you know, we like to see views, obviously. Depending on the time of the year, uh, you know, use soccer, might, might use of it. And that's, once again, this is scheduling issue.
You're talking about down the road, I don't think you need to, I don't want everybody getting their head that we're, the bathroom, you need to redo these bathrooms a little bit to support the people that's coming. When I was in Knoll County, we've been, ran kids' football, and I, I went out, the restroom, and I stood in line for ten minutes. So, you know, I did, I, ladies have always done it before my life, oh, you know, this is ridiculous, you know. And want to, you know, you want six or seven, you know, facilities inside there, to where you don't have that line outside. You gotta look at that, don't just go in and say, I'm gonna put a commode in the urinal, that's it. You need to redesign all this to work, uh.
With stage three, or whatever stage is, when you get to the point of having, uh, uh, your bleachers and press box and all those kind of things, you kind of assume maybe there will be additional restrooms for the company.
By saying that, I believe that you need to put your restroom facility away from your locker room, they don't need to be a part of.
Well, that's true.
Because of the amount of spaces you're going to need.
Well, that's why, you know, we need to look at all of our options, but I'm just saying, then, now we're talking about something entirely different. Uh, I'm just thinking, and maybe I'm not thinking, you know, thinking in all three, of something, of having the locker rooms to address that part, and having restroom for those that are there. I don't necessarily see an overflowing, uh, number of, uh, people wanting to use the restrooms, until you get to the point that you're gonna be playing games and things there, because you don't have any bleachers or anything. I mean, but I, I-
You see the soccer along when they have, uh, there, I mean, there's, there's a lot of people at soccer.
Yeah, the, the boys and girls sections had two hundred people, both nights.
But they have, they have seats.
Correct.
See what I mean?
Right.
And, and obviously, that is a, something to be considered. See, I, I don't, you know, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, uh, the rudimentary, uh, things that you have to get started with, then you build from there. But, you know, I, I'm hoping for whatever base-
They may have to use border bodies, so we can build another building.
Restroom, I don't see as a big deal, I mean, you just, you're building, you know, just block it up, whatever, you go block it, roof over, and you're done.
The, the girls' field just has a, the girls' field has a boys' restroom and a girls' restroom, that's it. It's not single-use.
We're not doing showers, so we're just doing-
Right.
Maybe we can get the guys over here to do that, our students.
Where?
Our students.
Mr. Minkit, I think it's-
They could do some of the work. I mean, there, there is a limit to what they, what they would be able to do for us, but I have had conversations with, uh, Mr. Mathis, Mr. Mathis, and talking with Mr. Millies, I don't see now.
No, they don't.
But the CTE program over there certainly could do some of this work for us, that's, there's no doubt.
Well, if it's not a big issue, then let's just build them.
And they will-
Build them, and they will use them.
They will use them, I guarantee they will use them, yeah. That's, that, I mean, it's, I guess it comes down, we need to address this a little further, and just look at our options, get some block options, get some, uh, sizes that we want to use. I don't think you need to put storage with, your storage needs to be a considered separate facility. I think you have two, you have your locker rooms, and your shower rooms and all for your team, and you have your restroom facilities out here. I don't think they should be together. If you needed to expand either one of them, you could, without affecting the other ones.
Well, I'd say, I, as long as you need to expand, and you're not going back and doing overs, what I've, you know, you're, you've done something that's gonna be permanent, and that doesn't mean you can't add on to it, but just do it well, and so you're adding on, but you're not going back, well, we did this, but, you know, it doesn't really meet our needs today, and, uh, let's redo this whole thing.
And I'm, I'm glad we're pursuing this, because it, Mr. Minkit and I talked to Mr. Ferguson, you wouldn't believe the price of turf that was, went down, down the road. If we have to, you know, being used, the whole concern with the grass field, you go one season after one season, eventually you're gonna kill that grass, you're beating it down, but if you got, down the road, you got all these programs kind of go, so hey, God, you know, let's look at, we're doing a turf field, so you have that option.
Or-
Yeah, I'll be going.
And then eventually, we want a nice concession.
Right.
We need that.
But it's, it's just really blew us away, the fact that, how, how the bottom dropped out on this turf. I mean, it, that's good, it's really good turf.
Yeah. I was there when you mentioned, everybody, you know, those that may not have been here, if you just go, whenever it was.
About three years ago, right?
When we had some presentations made to us about, you know, preparing the field, and they're throwing, throwing out five, six million dollar bids.
We were about to crawl on them.
Yeah, we were like, very good.
There's over two millions just for the turf, so.
Yeah, I mean, golly.
I, I say we just, let's see what Mr. Ferguson's plans look like, and go from there.
Okay. And Mr. Gosnig, you're talking, we got some bar blocks, for what we, it's kind of, like, even if it's two separate buildings, or what, you know, you guys think of, you know, how you, what, you might be there.
Okay, same, you know, he'd come down and walk the piece of prop, you know, where, so, those planes were designed, that was thirteen, fourteen, you know, years ago.
Yeah. We've seen a lot of designs go through there.
Yes. Now, you know, uh, where the field has been, uh, built now, there's kind of a slope off down there at that one end.
Yeah.
Now, just from your walking around, do you, do you see the structure, uh, being within what we have?
I don't see it down over that hill, no.
Okay.
No, I would not venture, now, given, saying that, down over the hill, there may be practice field, they may want to.
No, I'm just, what I was saying, but it's facility-wise. Building the structure on field, and then putting in more field, you know, but-
And, and that end of it was the actual dump for the school, if you will. A lot of the old blocks and things like that were all pushed over to that side, and when we done the field, we had to actually remove all that, because we had a slide, we had a slip come in there, and then we moved it, and put back in all good stuff there on the end of that, so that's also we want-
Maybe we can stay away from that.
Yeah, we want to stay away from that area.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Greg, you do a good job, and we trust your-
Thank you. I hope you look at God Valley here lately, that floor and all that, have you been up there?
Oh, no, I haven't.
You'll be up there, you'll be up there next week?
Yeah.
You have to go look for it.
I think that's part of the-
Pretty awesome, it's really awesome.
Mr. Webb, you have something?
You may have already answered this, um, you guys were actually talking about maybe if we had to do the brick side of it, to maybe discuss with the CTE programs about having carpentry or the masonry guys come in and maybe help, so they can get some kind of credit for that?
Right. Possibly, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because when I went to electrician school, it was at, it was at Putnam, their, it was at their school in Putnam County, because we didn't have an electrician class here, and they, uh, they let us work on everything there. I mean, they would let all the students, like, you know, if there was a building that needed to be built, the masonry guys would do it, or the carpenter guys, they, they let us electricians install, you know, lighting and run all that stuff. And if you have stuff like that for programs, especially something that they are going to be able to build and say, hey, look, this is what we did, it helps those programs immensely.
Yeah, they do cars, too, then, our students work on cars.
Yeah.
But we've, I know Mr. Minkit's talked to Mr. Miller, the CTE director there, about different parts of such program, you know, foundations of, all the way up on all of it.
And that would be good knowledge for them, because the stuff they have to do on those, they have, you know, these competitions they have to do, they end up every year, you know, they go to the nationals and all that stuff. I mean, a lot of that stuff plays into it. It has to be work-ready.
It would, it would be beneficial to the CTE programs, and maybe save us some good money, too.
It will, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Gosney, you have another mission?
Sounds good.
Add it to the list. All right, that's the only presentation, or the last of the presentations we have today, so let's go to the administrative section, please. Motion, Mr. Curry, Smith, Mr. Wilkerson, Mr. McKip.
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer retention. Item B is approved to create and post a halftime cook position at Lincoln County High School for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Item C, Marshall University student Thomas Cooper to complete fifteen hour observation at Hamilton K A first semester. Item D, to renew a contract with Coca-Cola Bottling Company to provide soft drinks and beverages for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year according to provisions of State Board Policy forty-three twenty-one point one and U S B A requirements. And item E, to renew the snack time LLC to provide healthy snack vending machine for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year according to provisions of State Board Policy forty-three twenty-one point one and U S B A requirements.
Okay, do you may have any questions about any of the items? Several have been talked about before. If not, is that an all yes vote on the administrative items?
Yes.
All yes. Okay, let's go to finance, then, to have a motion, please.
I'm here.
Mr. Baker?
Second.
Ms. Smith? Right.
Um, A, a schedule of invoices totaling eight hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. That listing is attached, if you've got any questions, just let me know. B, budget transfers are thirteen thousand, four hundred, eighty dollars. C, budget supplements of two million, twenty dollars, and, two million, twenty dollars, I can't talk today, just a little over two million dollars. And those are from the House Bill two oh six, those are all the additions that we have, where our state aid was increased somewhat. It's really not a two million dollar increase, it's more like a million dollars whenever everything's considered. Because whenever you list these, it lists the revenue twice on the supplements. So, everything for House Bill two oh six is now done.
Does that include, like, the monies for the additional positions, too, all of that?
Yeah, there was one, there were some things we had to do, step seven, where we decreased a lot of that, and then there was other parts where they just gave us a lump sum that was including the extra personnel, stuff like that. There was one entry for that. So, yeah, everything for that is now included on our budget.
Okay, does anybody have anything, Mr. Hatt, did you mention that? Okay, if not, is that an all yes on the finance items?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all yes on those two. All right, let's go to personnel, please, have a motion? Fred made the motion.
Second.
I was second.
Carol Beachy, slightly there, rally.
Yeah, I'm about a half second behind here and y'all, so cut me, you know, I'm trying.
You're doing a great job. We didn't catch.
I didn't say the pledge out loud with you, because I knew I was a little bit behind, a little bit delayed, that transfer.
But we were gonna listen to see if we were in sync with it.
And I was in sync with you, but I was on mute, so no way for you to disprove my statement that I was in sync.
That's right. Okay. Mr. King, question?
Item A, employment of substitute service personnel. Item B, employment of service personnel. Item C, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item D, a leave of absence. And item E, retirement and resignation. I'd please draw your attention to item number two on retirement and resignations. The, the location of Catherine Triplett is not midway, it is Doom Vol. I apologize for that.
Retiring is mid-year. Okay, does anyone have any questions, Mr. King, about the personnel items? I guess is our.
That is, I have provided an update, that lets you know what we're, what we have out there. We continue to repost for many positions, as, as you can see. And we keep beating the bushes and bringing them in, and doing the best we can. Our, our situation is not unique, folks. I was fortunate enough to attend a training with human resource officers just this past week, and, and a lot of the counties are, we're just special education and, you know, math, it's kicking everybody in the, in the derriere, we're just doing the best we can.
Nothing new, is it?
It is not anything new.
Okay, there's nothing further, then, is that an all yes on the personnel items?
Yes.
Okay, let's go down to the comments concerning board members, anybody have anything?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Wilkerson?
You know, we discussed the Department of Highway's doing a safety audit at Midway. And this is pretty well been set up, Mr. King and I have been working on this for the past week or two. The audit team will meet on Wednesday, November the thirteenth, at Midway. I have no idea how long the audit will take, I don't know exactly what to expect in the way of the mechanics of the audit. At any rate, let's hope that it eventually leads to a safer midway school situation. The audit team requested a meeting place, and Mr. King has taken care of that matter there. They also requested that the Sheriff's Department assist in, I suppose, providing protection and safety during the audit. I talked with the Sheriff last week, and he was actually very excited about this, I was surprised. The, he's pledged his support with the audit, and said that any, anything that the team needed, or the board of education needed that day, he would take care of. I don't know what, what will happen, I hope we'll be in a better situation after this is over. I hope, as you know, that it will lead eventually to getting flashing lights at the school. But it may, it may lead to some other good situations. I, I can see, since the Department of Highway owns that strip of property, it's there where the parents park, they may open some of that up to lead the parking situation for parents and pickup. You may not be aware, but in the morning, there are sixty-seven drop offs. And in the evening, it's even larger than that, it's approaching eighty, seventy, seventy-seven, something like that, in the evening. So you've got a real safety problem there, in the morning and evening. If anyone wants to show up that morning, it should be nice and crisp and cold. Once again, it's the morning, right now, the morning of November the thirteenth.
What was that, rally?
I'm sorry, I forgot that I was off mute.
Okay.
Accident.
That's not on my head right now.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that we've made progress, everybody, I want to make you, take you this week, because we've got topics that we're coming in looking, so stepping right through. Okay, anybody have any other comment, or any board members, anything else? Well, then, Mr. McKip?
Okay, a couple items, the last board meeting that we had, Mr. Curry asked about our home school numbers. And I shared with you that we had ninety-three students that we've lost this past year when we submitted our October enrollment. Mr. Pritchard, his best estimate of how many home schooled students were part of that ninety-three that we lost is twenty. Then he went on to share that we have somewhere around two hundred twenty or two hundred twenty-five students home schooled across the county, and that's, that's a significant number. How much money is that, a million dollars?
Two billion bucks, yeah.
You know, that we're losing in school aid fund as a result. And those numbers just continue to increase each year. Homeschool is, is becoming a problem across the state, as far as schools in the world. So, yeah, around twenty-five students have been homeschooled. You may.
Grand cap haul.
Yeah, I did cap haul. You may have recently been on our county website, we, over the past weeks, and you can't hear me, catch me.
Only if it goes in this year, because it's kinda holiday.
Uh, we, we moved to a new format, and a different company for our county website and for our school websites. And it's been a challenge, getting everything moved over, and not only getting it moved over, but being able to go on the internet and find our county website, and have information on there being accurate. Knock on wood, as of this morning, when we were checking both here at the office and out at the remote locations for some homes, it does appear at this point that everything is now working. There was two old websites that when you did a Google search, it was taking you to those old websites. But now, it's, it'll redirect you, if you do hit one of the old websites, it'll redirect you to the new website. So, everything was working this morning, was able to get in, because I think there were questions about job postings, and board events, and agendas. Everything appears to be there. It'll be all right, it's, it's been a challenge.
Yeah, I didn't have the Google thing work, was it? If it was on there, you know, if there were several of them, how did you, but you all originally re-directed for the Google everything, still.
Brandon, if you go over there, give him attention.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll find out more about that. What else?
All right, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss personnel.
Okay. Mr. McKip has asked for executive session to discuss the personnel matters at two twenty-three PM, do I have a motion? Mrs. Smith?
Same.
And Mr. Wilkerson, is that an all yes vote?
Yeah.
All yes.
Yep.